Good evening. Welcome to the May 23 meeting of the School Committee for the East Hampton Public School District. We welcome all of you who are here in person, as well as those of you who are viewing this either now as it's being produced by East Hampton Media or who will watch it later. The meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. East Hampton Media Channels 191, 192, and 193 is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch. Her number is 413-203-1360, and that number is in the record and in the minutes of tonight's meeting, so you can access it there if you didn't just hear it. Superintendent Follensby, you have some announcements as well, please.
I do. The next regular school committee meetings are June 13th and 27th. There is no school on Monday, May 29th due to Memorial Day, and currently, and we hope this is the truth now, the last day of school is scheduled for Monday, June 26th, which is a half day of school for students. Today was the last day of school for seniors.
Woo!
The senior banquet is May 25th. Senior outing is May 30th. Class night is May 31st, and graduation is June 3rd. For community members or others who do not have children in our schools and want to receive the superintendent updates, please visit our website at www.epsd.us and click on to subscribe under latest superintendent update, and the updates come out every Monday that we have school. Thank you.
Thank you. We have some correspondence, yes?
Yes. So, I apologize, I'm just going to get on this. We have correspondence from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges Commission on Public Schools, and this is providing a special progress report on East Hampton High School and the school's accreditation, the continued accreditation. Please to learn the following collaborative and inclusive process being used to revise the school's mission to now reflect the school's core values, beliefs, and learning expectations. Anything more to say about that?
This is something that happens every 10 years. In the last NEASC was the abbreviation for accreditation that happened 10 years ago. You know, we received accreditation at that time. We do it every 10 years, and it's a process where our faculty and administration get to evaluate our curriculum, mission, and any kind of policy changes. Then, once the visitors come in and do the assessment, they issue a report and show any areas that they believe need improvement and what the strengths are of our school. We find it a very useful process, and all schools in this area go through this. It's something that everybody feels is important to have, this accreditation from NEASC.
Thank you for clarification.
Thank you. I believe we also have gifts.
We do. I'd like to please vote to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts. Eileen Clavello for the donation of a large wooden crate for the STEM Technology Engineering Program at EHS. David Boyle for the donation of $750, excuse me, for the Diversity Club. The Helping Hand Society for the monetary donation to Maple School to help grow the school library. And to myself, Marissa Carreri for the donation of supplies to Maple School.
We have a second?
A second.
Motion made and seconded to accept these gifts. All in favor?
Right.
All right. Thank you. All right. Yes, we'd love to get the student representative update on student activities.
Well, Ms. Follensby just kind of said all the things I was supposed to say.
Sorry. Could you tell us a little more about them?
I know. But, to add, I think tomorrow at the school, East Hampton High School, there will be a dollars for, like, East Hampton Dollars for Scholars Awards Night. It's happening, it's separate from class night. It's their own organization that's happening at the high school tomorrow at 6:00. And the community barbecue that's helped, planned by student council with help from the Diversity Club, oral language club was supposed to be scheduled for this Friday, but it ended up having some changes, and it's still yet to be determined what the date will be for that, so.
Yeah. Get the boat, cruise?
Oh, that's on Thursday.
Do I talk about that a little bit?
Sure.
That's kind of nice.
Sure, the seniors will get to go to Boston Harbor for, like, a little mini cruise for everyone, we get to dance and have some food and bond with everyone. That should be nice. So, yeah, that is this Thursday for all seniors. Yeah.
Before we move to the next item on the published schedule, and I hope we don't incur the wrath of anyone for failing to put this on in advance, but we would like to take a moment to recognize the service of two students, one of whom is here tonight but who have helped us throughout the year with presentations like the one you just heard, giving us an update on student activities, and helping keep us informed of the student perspective, which has been particularly helpful in light of the recent challenges that we have faced, and we've had particularly valuable and articulate and heartfelt service, I think, tests that, I'm speaking only for myself, but I'm sure my colleagues here agree, that your insight and willingness to take risks in sharing them so honestly and forthrightly in our meetings and in other ways has been a tremendous asset, not just to us as a school committee, but to the students throughout the school system, and therefore also to the community of East Hampton. And so, on behalf of the committee and my colleagues, we have both a certificate of recognition for you and a small gift in recognition and honor of your service. So, I don't know if I should lean over here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We also, I looked quickly, Stephanie? Here, no. All right, but we also will, at the next opportunity, be sure to share the same sentiments with Stephanie Martinez, who has ably assisted us as well. Okay? All right. Thank you for that important diversion from the planned schedule. We'll now move to a presentation by Gerard Benoit on a foreign exchange program.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I'd like to thank the committee for taking the time to speak with me this evening regarding the foreign exchange program that we have at East Hampton High School. I'm coming to propose the continuation of the program and to set into motion plans for the French exchange for 2017, 2018. And with your permission, I've prepared a short clip to kind of give you a quick visual overview of what it is. It's 3 minutes and 44 seconds long, if that would be all right?
Sounds very good. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lucille Lamotte. I'm 16 years old. My family brings me in France, in the village of Térris-Somme. I live in, next to the sea, in a little house. I have one dog, a wee bit female. She's really nice and very quiet. My parents are Annys and Jean-Michel. They are 46 and 48 years old. I study in the ice room of Sainte-Lie in Châtelet. It's really good. At school, I like studying English and sciences. I have many activities during my best time. I like going and doing pool, practicing skateboard, and drawing other things. I like basketball and volleyball, too. To whom it may concern, I am a nice girl, and I really enjoy meeting other people, speaking with them, and learning their culture. I hope to see you, and I look forward to speak with you. XO, XO, Lucille.
It's 10 to 9.
Have you completed?
It's 10. But there's not 13.
C'est ça.
Hmm. Zero. [laughing]
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 So, thank you for indulging me in that. As you can see, you know, this is not merely a trip abroad. There's lots of educational experiences, you know, in this program, not just in the classroom, but in families. It's a time for families to exchange. From the very beginning, we have students sending letters to each other, and you saw it starts just like that. And as soon as we pair, you know, an EH student with Lucy, they will begin their relationship, and their families will begin their relationship, and programs like this are really about people and their relationships. And we are fortunate in East Hampton that we've already established a relationship with the Lice Saint Louis. We went last spring, and it was a, you know, for the first time in this community. It was such a success. We were well represented. I could not have been, you know, prouder of our students, and they can't wait to do it again. And so, this is why I wanted to come to you today, to see if that might be a possibility, to put forth this excellent opportunity.
Terrific. Does anyone have questions? Yes, please.
So, Mr. Benoit, first of all, thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
And I just have a question. So, you're saying 2017, 2018?
Right.
And it was the spring that our students visited?
That is correct.
So, are you looking at the same, because I know you had the exchange students, they came here?
Right.
In the fall, and we went there, and are you looking at that same type of setup, the spring/fall?
Exactly. So, in October, you know, like, the third week of October or so, we're hosting 15 students, three boys, 12 girls, and they will be in East Hampton for 10 days.
Which would be this, this year?
This, that's right. This coming October, and then we in turn will go there in April. Also, for 10 days in the family, and an additional three or four days in Paris.
And, so you're looking for families, are you?
Yes, actually, so at this moment, we have 12 students who have come forward to say that, you know, we'd love to host a French student, so we're still, we're still looking for families. I cannot stress what an opportunity this is. This is not about France, this is not about French. It's an opportunity to make a friend across the globe, and the growth that can happen here, not just for our students, but even the families themselves, is just tremendous. So, it's worth considering.
So, I'd like to just speak first, I love the choice of music.
Yeah, me too.
One of my favorite films is Amelie, so I was, like, right on with that. And I personally have experienced living abroad. For five years, I lived in Rome, Italy, and my daughter was born there, and the exchange, and like you said, the relationship of learning from people from different cultures is so important. It's something that you don't get in a book, and I think it's wonderful that you do this, and it's such an opportunity for our students. And, I mean, I was moved to tears when I was looking at the pictures, because the experience of going abroad and being so curious about another culture, and seeing what it's like, and just the little students there, like, trying to understand the French, and then they're asking their teacher if they could understand it correctly, and then they said, you know, the translation piece. And then for our students to be able to have that experience is, it's invaluable, so I really appreciate it.
Well, you're certainly welcome, and you know, one of the things that I can't stress enough, as soon as you become an adult, as soon as you graduate from high school, this is an opportunity that will no longer exist exactly like this. You can be in a host family, but through university, it kind of takes on a different feel. If you're a kid, they will take you into their family, you know, like you were one of theirs, and so you have complete access to the culture.
Which includes, you know, the family life, the food.
Absolutely.
What they do for their free time. I mean, you wouldn't get that if you were to go on vacation there.
Certainly not.
Are you saying, Mr. Benoit, that we're too old?
I'm not saying that. What I mean is, people are more likely to open their homes, you know, if you're a kid.
I know what you're saying. Thank you. Now, you said you have 12 that have already, 12 students have already, you know, said that they would.
How many do you need?
How many families?
I need three more.
That's, oh, so total of 15.
Yep.
Great.
That's great.
Wow.
And you probably become, like, lifelong friends, or, you know, kind of family in a way.
That's right. That's right. And it's not just between the students, but even the families.
Yeah.
And I've had students whose families in the past have gone to France after the fact, the entire family.
So, I think this is wonderful, and I've offered support for it in the past, as you know, because we've talked about this each go-round. My, my two concerns are being sure that we make it as accessible as possible, and I know that young people in the community can work hard and part-time jobs and save their funds up to go, but I think if this is something we believe in, and it sounds like people believe it's a, it's a good thing, I think it's important that we continue to consider ways of offering forms of financial aid. I don't know what your experience has been with anything related to that. If there's anything you want to comment on that, I'm happy to just leave that remark as a remark, so it's not, unless you wish to.
Yeah, no, I quite agree. This should be something that everybody has access to. I think it should be a graduation requirement, quite honestly, but, no, I completely agree. I don't have a lot of experience coming up with that kind of fundraising, and so I look to the members of the school committee to, you know, draw on their experiences, you know, to help me with that. Also, to the community, if there's anyone in the community that has an idea, we would love to hear about these fundraising possibilities. I'm pleased to say that in the last exchange, you know, not all of the students were able to completely afford it, but we did make it happen for them.
I just, and I was, I was looking at the numbers between the two, and it sounds like more come to us than we're able to send there.
Well, you know, this is a new program here, and so, and I'm a relatively new teacher here. People don't know me very well, and so, I don't know if it's, I don't know this guy, what is his program, there are other traveling programs that happen as well.
I also think it's, excuse me, it's cultural, too, because, you know, people there are used to sending their kids even for the whole summer, so that they can learn English, because it's, like, really important for them, so that might be a little bit of it, too.
That's right.
Yeah, and I only take it to mean that I would love to see us have 15 students traveling with you next year, and doing whatever we could to contribute to that. So, I suspect that we're all in agreement in theory, and that the difficulty will come with actually finding ways, but as we've appealed to the community to help with the hosting, I think, as we said earlier tonight during the gift section, if people are persuaded, as many of us are, that this is really worthwhile, that, you know, perhaps you don't feel up to hosting a student for the length of the stay, but you might help provide financial aid to an East Hampton student to be able to travel. It's another, another way that people in the community can contribute to this.
Exactly.
The second concern, and sorry to be the one with the concerns about this, I may stand alone on this, is that in your note, you point out that the students will miss five to six days of school, and I know that they will be getting the enrichment program. My other concern in this, I'm really speaking directly to the superintendent about this, but I'm hoping that the, the school committee will agree with me, that to lose you from the classroom, because you can't afford to go with you, is, is, is a trade-off, and it sort of doubles the concern that I have about the monetary piece here, right? Every student in East Hampton who's enrolled in French should have access to a similar quality program, and so what I would ask is that, since we know about this so far in advance, and perhaps with your connections to people in the academic world, maybe we could find a substitute who's particularly talented in instruction in French, so that we minimize the differential.
Sure.
There. Because otherwise, and I'm not speaking ill of a sub, but if, you know, I think I'd be purely capable as a sub, but not to speak French, right? And the difference between what the students who are with you in Paris or in a homestay, and the students who are left with me as the sub in the classroom is significant. We should endeavor to not, my policy, make that, make that happen, I think. So, I guess what I'm saying to the rest of the committee is that along with our endorsement of this, needs to be a commitment that we try to both make it accessible to more students, if not a graduation requirement, at least accessible to as many as 15 students, and that that's going to require financial aid, and that we also, even if it, even if it requires some additional use of resources, ensure that for the five to six days that Mr. Benoit is out of class, that the students who are still here studying French can continue on in their program successfully. So, I don't know if other people have comments about that?
Nancy, wasn't French your major?
Was my major. Maybe I could substitute. But I think, I think we always look for highly qualified substitute teachers, and I think your suggestion is a good one, Peter, that if we're starting now, and see if we can find someone who could bring some wonderful new ideas and new experiences in your absence.
Sure.
And, you know, who could continue on with the strong program that you present for our students.
Excellent idea.
And we'll live through the pictures, just like we did last year.
Absolutely. I'll send pictures and everything else.
Yeah, I remember you sent emails periodically. We love that.
They were great.
Every, every three days or so.
Mm-hmm. That was great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Does anyone else have any questions or comments for Mr. Benoit before we entertain a motion? You want me to make the motion?
What is the motion?
Well, we need to make the motion to approve the continuation of the French exchange program between East Hampton High School, and this is going to be proof why I shouldn't be the substitute, the, is it Lycée?
Lice.
Lice? Saint Louis?
Very good. Now you can be the substitute.
No, 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 there's one more word. I got the France part. Châtelet?
Châtelet.
That's right. Châtelet? So, I've made the motion?
Second.
Oh, good, thank you. Any further discussion? I'm holding you all accountable to your commitment to help with the recruiting for financial aid and a good substitute teacher until we can send everybody on a wonderful adventure like this.
Parfait.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Merci beaucoup.
Je vous en prie.
Nice seeing you. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
All right. We now come to the portion in our regular session where we will hold public speak, and again, for those of you who are returning, you'll have heard this before. For those of you that are new, we're going to ask that you come to the podium, that you speak to the school committee. You may be speaking about a variety of things, and, yeah, I can understand the impulse to turn to the larger audience out there, to speak to us, and with two reminders that students in the district have privacy rights, so we should not say anything live and on camera that puts at risk a student's privacy rights, and that all people in the district also have due process rights, and we should not say anything live and on camera that would put those due process rights. So, if I interrupt you, it will be because in my sense, you are either doing that or coming close to it, and I want to save you, and more importantly, the individual involved, from something that should not occur. And we will also limit you, I've got my phone turned off, but on a timer here, I'm going to try to keep track of the time, and ask you to keep your remarks to two minutes. We've said that there are 10 minutes on the agenda, we're willing to go a little bit beyond that, but we do have, in addition to this meeting, we have a policy committee meeting tonight, so we will go no longer than 30 minutes of public speak. And remember that if you speak once, if you would return to your seat until everyone else who wishes to speak has had an opportunity to do so, and then you can return and speak again. If you are unable to speak tonight, or just want to reflect further before you do so, remember that you can send an email, or a written letter, or make an appointment to meet with anyone. The superintendent is more than welcome to meet with anyone, and we are certainly welcome to do it. Be aware that if you send an email to us at our East Hampton School District email, it is a matter of public record. You can't send it and then ask for it to be kept confidential, right? So, you would need, in that case, if you have something like that, my recommendation would be that you would bring it directly to the superintendent, so that the superintendent and our council can determine whether or not it can be entered into the public record or whether it needs to be left out. I feel like I should ask for clarifying questions, but we're probably good. So, is there anyone who would like, oh, and our preference as well would be that people who have, who are residents of East Hampton or who have children being schooled in East Hampton through, through school choice, speak. So, please feel free to come forward, and I'll start. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Carney-Palonas. I reside at 28 Byer Drive here in East Hampton. Good evening. A group of us, as concerned citizens and parents, has now addressed this committee on several occasions, citing our concerns over the events that have occurred this year at East Hampton High School, and our lack of confidence in the current administration to bring about effective change. We are submitting to you tonight a timeline of events, of substantiated claims, of an ongoing culture of division, racism, and intimidation that has gone unresolved by those in leadership positions, school administrators, and the superintendents. Reports and correspondence dating back to April, excuse me, October 8th of last year, and culminating in the recent posts on social media threatening both the school itself and individual students within the school, demonstrate an escalating danger that puts our children's safety in jeopardy. This timeline identifies many instances where those in positions of authority had the opportunity to take action to alleviate the growing divisions among students, and instead chose to ignore and/or cover up these events. The situation we find ourselves in did not start with a parking lot fight, or end with banning a flag. It started with an administration unwilling to take a hard line against discrimination, racism, bullying, and intimidation, and will not end until all of our kids feel safe in their school. So, to that end, we ask for real answers to our concerns. We ask why, when the administration was made aware of ongoing racial incidents, no action was taken. Why discrimination was not only tolerated, but allowed to continue unchecked? We ask why, when the administration was told of a potential for a physical altercation, no action was taken. There is evidence that the administration knew 24 hours prior to the fight that took place. Why was nothing done to prevent this altercation and the resulting fallout? This inaction has had real consequences for the young men involved, which could have been prevented had the administration done their jobs properly. We ask why, when a staff member approached the administration in fear for their own child's safety, no action was taken. Any parent who comes to the administration with concerns has the right to have those concerns heard and addressed, not be dismissed as a nuisance. We ask why, when a social media post showed the school being targeted, no action was taken. There are set protocols to investigate any threat made against the school and those within it. We've seen them used in the past, yet nothing was done this time. it. We've seen them used in the past, yet nothing was done this time. Why? We ask why it took an implied threat against an administrator before any of the threatening social media posts were acknowledged and acted upon. Do our administrators feel their safety outweighs that of their students?
Let me pause you there. I apologize, but we have hit two minutes and gone a little bit past. And I see from the length of the letter that this will go for further length of time. So I would ask that you, that we allow other people to speak, and that we'll then keep the letter and either complete it, you can complete reading it, or we'll all have it.
Okay.
As a copy. Thank you. I appreciate that.
My name is Shannon Dunham. I live at 56 Brian Ave. To continue the letter, our town has largely been kept in the dark as to just how serious the situation is that EHS has become. So we now have taken upon ourselves to turn on the lights, not to embarrass those involved, but simply to show our kids that they have our support. That even though their school system has failed them, and yes, you have failed them, we will continue to support their efforts and create a school culture that is open to diversity, dialogue, cooperation, and education. This administration, those charged with safeguarding, nurturing, and educating our children, have not lived up to even the minimum standard in this situation. They are so busy trying to keep their jobs, they've forgotten to do their jobs. This must end, and it must end now. To that end, we ask that the students of EHS be given the opportunity to speak instead of merely being spoken to, and we ask that this committee, this administration, and this community take the real time to listen, to really listen to what our children are trying to tell us. We ask that their teachers be given the opportunity to speak out against current climate of intolerance without fear of retaliation or repercussion. The fear of being targeted is real, and we believe holding many back from sharing their insights and possible solutions to the growing divisions. We ask that all involved students, parents, teachers, and administrators, along with all city departments and committees, be held accountable for their actions or a lack of action. We can no longer drag our feet thinking it will resolve itself. We must take action to have solid leadership in our schools for the sake of the children. We ask that an outside investigation into these allegations be undertaken immediately by an independent firm. We do not believe that the current investigation by the superintendent's office can offer an unbiased objective result. Finally, we ask that the position of school resource officer be removed. In the current climate, we feel a daily police presence in our school is detrimental. We instead would advocate for well-trained adjustment counselors to aid students in resolving conflicts within the school. It is too late for many of the students who have spoken before this committee. In 10 days, they will graduate and move on to the next chapter. And we have not done all that we can to help them, and in too many cases, our inaction has actually harmed them. What should have been a time of joy, fond memories, and celebration has instead become a time of stress, mistrust, and division. We must do better for the next group, and the one after that, and those to follow for years to come.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee tonight?
Before my two minutes begins, I have some pictures of some Instagram posts I'm going to give to the committee, and I'm going to talk about these in my address to the committee. My name's Nori Nardi. I live on Willow Circle in East Hampton. The night of the last school committee meeting, May 4th, someone made an Instagram account, "Make EHS Great Again." There were threatening pictures and comments involved, one of which targets locked of the picture of EHS, another one, complete bullying against Muslims, and there was a third, which you'll see. Why wasn't the police brought into the investigation when the first Instagram account became on the web? And there was no, there was no investigation of the threat to the students and the staff. We need to learn from Ludlow. There was one incident, one or two days, action, education, and there was a result. By not alerting police on that first account, we are putting our students in danger, and we're preventing the police from doing their job. Why didn't we receive any information about that account or any account until the following Tuesday? Why hasn't there been any education about cyberbullying since those accounts were put up? We didn't receive the information on these incidents until May 16th. At that time, we were told the administration had just learned about the accounts the night before, but in actuality, they were informed on May 10th, and then again on May 12th. At this time, having a school resource officer has not been beneficial, and poor use of resources. We have the police department right around the corner, who can be on site within minutes. This position is not currently filled and has proven to be ineffective. The money spent in this area could be best used to hire a professional who is trained in incident de-escalation, creating a positive school climate, sexting investigations, and suicide risk assessment. They should also be able to recognize signs of violent extremism and assess digital threats. You know, Mr. Gunn, I know that Williston had an incident this year. I think it was one Instagram post that was racially charged. That incident, right away, there was a meeting, the kids had to write a paper, there was discussion, and I believe the student was put on probation. That's what we need. What is it going to take? We need action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there someone else who would like to speak to the committee tonight?
Hi, Tess. I'm Beth Cole. I'm at 19 Park Street. I was thinking, Pete Gunn, your suggestion about the France funding for a scholarship, maybe Williston could underwrite someone, since, you know, you know, you were talking about people with connections to academia, and I'm pretty sure, like, they don't pay city taxes, right? They don't pay property taxes, you know, so they probably have, you know, they could probably spare it. But really, why I wanted to come up here is because when you talk about the accreditation, it reminds me that we moved here around the time of the last one. And we moved from Northampton and put our kids into the schools here, and it was kind of considered like a risky decision, you know? And for a long time, I would say years after, when we would run into friends from Northampton, they would say, you know, "How is Frank doing in the school there?" Like that. And we'd say, "Oh, my God, he's doing great. We love it." And they'd be like, "That's great," you know, like, like, "You're so brave," like that, you know, because we were in the East Hampton schools. And we've had a great experience up until now. Anyway, it just makes me think like about how far East Hampton has come. Not just its reputation, but it's, you know, the schools, they've, they've come really far in these last 10 or 12 years, correct? And I think that a lot of that progress is at risk right now with this thing that started as an incident and became a scandal, like it's a regional scandal. And it's kind of, I kind of feel like, you know, the scandal part was preventable, you know? The incidents that are happening, maybe you guys don't have control over, but you have a lot of control over the response. And the response has been just pitiable. You know, it seems like at every point, you underestimate the reaction, you know, like we'll get information from the school. Like Monday, last week, we got two emails in one day from Principal Burke about this Instagram thing, you know? And the last thing said, "And I'll keep you updated." And now it's been like another week, and we haven't been updated. But the previous Instagram incident, which where it actually had the school, and it said target locked and everything, you know, they, we didn't hear anything about that. And it almost seems, if I was cynical, I might say, that it seems like we hear from Principal Burke when he thinks whatever the latest thing is, is going to be covered by the media, you know?
Ask you to pause there, and we'll have you come back up and speak again. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hello. I'm Barb O'Brien, and I live on Button Road here in East Hampton. And I am the former district nurse of this community, and I retired, I think, three years ago. I guess what I want to say is, I'm so surprised at this day and age that these issues still exist. I grew up in Washington DC area in the 60s and the 70s, and we had the student demonstrations and the riots and all that, and lived through it once. And now I feel like I'm living through it again. It's just, it's something that, it just keeps getting fueled and fueled and fueled. And it's got to stop somewhere. I know it takes time. And believe me, I applaud everything that you've all been doing, and superintendent, and principals, the students, the parents, everybody, trying to work together. It is going to take time. It's not something that's going to be solved overnight, because we've seen how we address one issue, and then suddenly, it becomes another issue with the flag and things like that. And there, there are certain things that become instigators and like a lightning rod, and then people will rush to that issue. And then suddenly, the original thing that brought us here was the bullying, and it wasn't just against the black community, it was against Muslims, it was against anybody who was different. And we've gone from that suddenly to now moving to the flag, and who knows what other issue will come up next. But I think as people, we do need to be patient, we need to work together, and we need to keep the kids safe from each other and from us. Because I see a lot of this as being fueled in the kids' homes. And, you know, I've, I've said it many, many times. I talked with the principal when I heard about the, the second Instagram account. I never heard about the first, but when I saw the second one, I immediately called. And I just said, you know, "This has got to stop." And I called other parents that I saw pictures of their kids being targeted. It's just, it's not right. It is a criminal act, in my opinion, and it does need to be followed up with the police involvement, because it's just going to recycle, you know? I got the impression it was going to be something that was going to be handed off from one student to another, you know, "Ha ha, catch me if you can" type of thing, that, you know, "There's nothing you can do to me." Well, there is something we can do to them. And as a community, we have to put our foot down, and we have to keep everybody safe. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Sorry.
Hi, my name is Kathy Wazinski, and I live on Overlook Drive. My daughter is a student at the high school. And I have watched a little bit from afar as things have unfolded. And I'm concerned about some of the infringements on freedom of speech, and some of the nasty remarks that have made, been made to kids who didn't participate in some of the demonstrations. Students suggesting that our kids were racist because they decided not to participate in the demonstrations. And what are, some of our kids were doing were standing up for the idea that violence is not okay. And I think that there is issues of discrimination, not just towards individuals of color, but also individuals who might have a more conservative viewpoint. And I do not think that's okay either, and it's not being addressed. And I've repeatedly heard of issues regarding kids with disabilities being bullied, and brought that to the attention. And it's sort of been, "No, it's not really happening" kind of deal. And, and that's, as an advocate for people with disabilities, that's not okay. And I find it really frustrating, including remarks made by teachers that were supposed to be funny, but really were insensitive, and perpetuated stereotypes about individuals with disabilities. And I really have a problem with some of those issues, and I would like them all to be addressed. That every viewpoint needs to be respected, that freedom of speech needs to be supported, and that it is not okay to, to pick on kids that have a different opinion than the kids that are protesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Just by way of note, and this is not to preclude other people from coming forward, please do, that I failed to say before, remember that we cannot respond directly in the moment to, to the comments that our purpose here during public speak is to hear. So please don't take a failure to get an immediate response. There may be moments during the subsequent portions of the meeting when it would be relevant for us to include the thoughts that you've shared in our conversation about what's on the agenda. But that's the process. Again, just in case anyone is concerned about why we're not, in some cases, answering questions that are posed. It's totally appropriate for people to pose the questions. It's also necessary for us to take them into consideration, but not to respond to them immediately during public speak. So please, other folks who want to come forward, please do.
Hi, my name is Dan Broadhurst. I live at Lawler Drive. My son came home the other day, well, after all this garbage went on with the Confederate flag and how people were offended. He said one of the students came trotting in with a big grin on his face wearing a Black Lives Matter t-shirt. I know this is brought up at one of the meetings. If you ban this, why aren't we going to ban this? What else are we going to ban? When does it stop? The Confederate flag was squashed until the end of the year. Now we have this, which I think is kind of pushing the issue. It's a black hateful group, promotes violence against police officers. You go online, you can find it very easily. And I agree with the racism thing, but it works both ways. My wife and I attended one of the meetings held with Sapphire. One of her signs she had up on the window, "One big word: opinion." There was probably two dozen people at that meeting, my wife, myself, and another couple. We had a different opinion than the other group that was in there. We were attacked for that opinion. We didn't, see, one of the questions my wife was asked, "Didn't you take history class? How can you say that? It seems like if you're not part of this little clan that we have in town right now, you're against us." I feel those meetings, the parent forums are terrible, as I said. If you didn't agree, you were just ostracized, pushed aside, and attacked for your views. We have an opinion. It's a shame we're not allowed to voice it, because we don't agree with the other ones. We're just going to be told to sit down and shut up. I think it's ridiculous. But hopefully, we can deal with this Black Lives Matter t-shirt, which I find very offensive. My son found it very offensive, and other students found it very offensive. Hopefully, that can be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening, and thank you. Wayne Ducharme from East Hampton, Federal Street. I'm calling from, because I am a parent of two children that were brought up in, born in this area. We've been here for 30 years. My daughter is 23, my son is 19. They did not go to this high school in East Hampton, because we chose them to go out of town to another high school because of the problems that we're having. Understand that they are 23 and 19. So we made that decision a long time ago. This is not a problem that's been going on only the last two years. This has been a problem that's been going on a long time. My, my daughter's in the medical field, because of where she went. My son just got accepted to UConn. I do not believe that that could happen if they went to East Hampton High School, given the problems we have. Understand that. Everybody has a problem. Everybody has this. But it's gone too far. I know friends that have been, you know, punished and bullied because they did not walk out on the walkout with the kids that, that marched downtown, and they were bullied. "Oh, do you want to walk with us?" "No, we don't, we don't, I don't want to walk." So they've been bullied. But nobody sees that part. Everybody looks at the bullying as being a part of the flag, or the Confederate flag, or Black Lives Matter. But how about the person that wants to study and stay in school on that day that everybody walks out? But because this person wants to stand there and do his academics, he's being bullied. Nobody sees that. It's a joke.
Thank you, Mr. Ducharme.
Is my two minutes up?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee? Give me one sec. So go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emma Stoddard. I live in Holyoke, but I graduated East Hampton High School in 2013. I don't really know how some people describe it. There have been issues going on for a long time, because that is not accurate. I can say that from my experience in the East Hampton school system as a whole, there were no... were no incidences even remotely similar to this, or any instances like this at all. I would also like to address the fact that racism is not an opinion, I think that is very important, and that calling somebody out for having racist or backwards views in our society is not bullying at all. And also, Black Lives Matter and the Confederate flag should not even be mentioned, really in the same sentence, for advocating for freedom of speech, because Black Lives Matter is a group that supports the safety and well-being and care of African Americans. A group have been continually marginalized, marginalized in our society, and the Confederate flag is a symbol of hate. As discussed, I don't need to go over this again, but it just needs to be addressed, that these things cannot be talked about in the same instance. And Black Lives Matter should, that should, is a group that should be supported no matter what. And I just, I wanted to get up and just say that because it's unacceptable for people to compare the two and have that be the last thing said. I just do not really want that, so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. We have time for a couple more. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, as we wrap this portion of the meeting up, again, I just want to, I first want to thank everyone for taking the time to share your thoughts. I think it's clear that this is difficult to hear and in some cases, to process effectively in real time. And I would urge everyone, you've heard this before, you'll hear it again later, but when you become aware of instances that occur that concern you, if you can bring them directly and as concretely as possible to either the leader in the building that your concern is focused on, if not there, to the superintendent's office, if not there, to a member of the school committee, to the extent that you can do that, it is helpful to us because the more concrete the information is, the more readily that we can try to pursue and establish a baseline factual record and then begin to apply the policies of the district and the laws of the Commonwealth as effectively as we can. But again, we thank you for sharing your remarks. We know that this conversation is going to continue for some time, and we hope that we can continue to engage in it in as civil and thoughtful a way as possible, even though it is extraordinarily challenging to do that. So thank you to everyone who spoke tonight. With that, we'll move to section two in the meeting. And by the way, because I know that this was a concern expressed last time, and I don't expect everyone to have a copy of the agenda in front of them, there is an update on East Hampton High School concerns on the agenda. So please don't depart and then be concerned later that something came up. There's no attempt to wait for people to leave, you know? You just have to hang in there with us while we take care of other pieces before we come to that. Well, superintendent update is at your, you know, I would defer to you on that, superintendent, if you'd like to speak to that piece now. Is there anyone on the committee who would object to us moving item three ahead of the discussion of the subcommittee report?
I think it'd be a good idea, while everybody's still here.
Okay, I'm happy to, I'm happy to accept that change, and I think we can proceed to the superintendent's update. So superintendent, fall on speed.
Thank you. It just seems timely to address some of the issues that you brought up this evening, you know, while they're fresh in everyone's mind. I do want to make sure that everyone understands, and I've said this many times before, there is an ongoing investigation underway at this point in time. We're interviewing witnesses. We have Jeff Seelander, a former principal of the high school, interviewing witnesses of the different events that have been brought before the school committee and before me, and taking witness statements. That's part of our investigation. I also am interviewing people, teachers, and others who have been involved in any of the incidents that have been brought before us. And in addition, we have the attorney general's office, who have asked us for a number of documents, which we are glad to supply to them. We have nothing to hide. We're pleased to be able to present all of the evidence that we have, and they're asking us for copious amounts of documents, and so we're in the process of making sure that we get everything that they need. We don't have a school resource officer at this time. We haven't had one for a number of months. And the future of the school resource officer position is, will be determined probably over the summer. And that has to be determined with the police department in conversations with them, whether they have somebody who wants to be the school resource officer. We're not sure if the former school resource officer will be able to return to his position. So all of those things will be decided as we are able to address them with the police department. We do have programs on cyberbullying. We had from the attorney, state, US State Attorney's Office in Springfield, a cyberbullying program called the Safe Schools Program. We have very few parents attend, which was sad for us. It was a great program. We also presented it to our students in the high school the following morning, I believe it was. I think we had the parent program that in the evening, and then the program for the students the next morning. And we continue to provide programs like that for our students throughout the school The Instagrams, so yes, those were brought to our attention. And as soon as they were brought to our attention, we brought them to the attention of the police department, both Instagrams. We've worked closely with the police department. The police officer was there when we were interviewing students, trying to determine who it was who had posted those Instagrams. We have identified some of the students who are responsible, and we have taken all appropriate disciplinary actions. And not, not light disciplinary actions. We take this very seriously. We were very upset about this. And we have taken the actions that are appropriate for us to take, and as you know, because of student privacy issues, I can't tell you any more than that. But I can tell you that the police were involved from the time we first knew about the Instagram postings. And perhaps, we didn't communicate with you immediately because we were waiting to see if we could identify and take care of it immediately, and it's taken time for that investigation to occur. We did work with the police department on getting the Instagrams taken down as soon as we possibly could because they were extremely offensive. Going on, I want to talk a little bit about some of the things that we have been doing to address these issues. And I think some of you have spoken about this this evening. There is no quick fix for what's going on in our high school, you know? But we are devoting, you know, all of our energies to working with as many organizations as we can to help provide support for us in our quest to take care of these issues and to heal our school. As an example, on Monday, I met with Tess, our representative here, and two other student leaders. We had heard at the last school committee meeting, and Tess was good enough to share information, and I'm going to stop for a minute because before I forget to say this, I've said this over and over again. If you don't bring things to our attention, we can't take care of them. So this is great. And anything that you bring to our attention, we address. But if we don't know about something, we can't take care of it. So Tess, I think, is a great example of one of our student leaders who, after the meeting, said to me, you know, we just, well, she said in the meeting, you know, the meetings with Sapphire DeYoung and the collaborative are helpful, but we're not feeling as students that we're having an opportunity to talk. We're in groups that are too big, it's too structured, it's not the right opportunity for us. That was great information for me. And I said to Tess, can I get together with you and a couple of your friends and have you tell me and tell us what it is that you want, what it is that would be helpful? And Tess, being the student leader that she is, was good enough to find two other students, two other seniors, and they met with me Monday morning, yes? In spite of the fact that she, I believe, was studying for an exam or going to take an exam, a very busy schedule. Our seniors have very busy schedules. So they met with me, and we had a great discussion about what it was that they needed to feel heard. And from that discussion, we're developing a plan to put into place before the end of the school year. Now, that doesn't give us a lot of time, so we're meeting again tomorrow morning at 7:15 in the morning, early for Tess, early for me. And we're going to continue our conversations so that we can address these needs that our students have brought forward to us. If needs are brought forward to us, we address them. I will address them. And if you don't feel like you're being heard, or if you don't feel like your need is being met, then make an appointment to come and see me and tell me about it, and I will take care of it. So we're really pleased to be working with Tess and some of our students on this initiative. Last week, Principal Burke, Assistant Principal Welson, Mayor Kadger, Chief Alberti, and I met in Springfield with the US State Attorneys. We were invited to meet with them to help us problem-solve these issues that we're facing in our community and in our schools. And in addition, we had Muhammad Ali Salam of their Community Relations Service there, and Phil Fogelman of the Anti-Defamation League, to help us plan a community event here in East Hampton. The US State Attorney's Office is providing our district and community with strong support and the many resources they have to help our school community and the community at large move forward in a positive direction to achieve the goal we all want, to embrace diversity and to develop a common understanding and respect for fair treatment for all. And I say for all. Lastly, I want to stress again that in our high school and across the district, we embrace everyone's right to freedom of speech, freedom of speech, while ensuring there is respect for all members of our community and zero tolerance for violence. And again, if you feel that you aren't being heard, I ask you to do as Tess did. Come to me. Send me an email. Call my administrative assistant. Come and meet with me, and I know some of you have. But it needs to be an ongoing collaboration between all the members of our community and the members of our school department in order for us to bring our schools, and our high school in particular, that's what we're talking about tonight, to the place that they always have been, a safe and wonderful place to get a high-quality education. We had one of our graduates speak about that tonight. And that's our goal, to bring us back to that high school that we all know and love. But I can't do it alone, none of us can do it alone, and it isn't going to happen overnight. It's hard work. So I ask you as community members, I ask you as school members, to work with me, work with us, to solve this problem and to move forward in a positive direction. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for superintendent Fallon?
I just have one, one quick question. Nancy, the AG's office, that is an outside investigation, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. And, and we will be getting a date for that forum that we're going to be having with the US Attorney's Office, correct?
Correct.
I know we've been in the planning stages, trying to make a date as soon as possible that's convenient for everybody on their end because they'll be coming from all different areas, correct?
That's right, that's right.
Thank you so much.
And just as a point of clarification in relation to that, because it's, it's hard sometimes to hear and keep separate, there are two different offices that are involved.
Yes, there's a state office and a US, United States office.
Right, the State Attorney General's Office, as well as the US.
It's actually, that would be federal. It's the US Attorney's Office.
The US one is the federal one.
In the federal courthouse in Springfield.
Right, and, and we are in communication with each.
With both.
With both, right? I just think that's important for, for folks to understand that, that there are, there are two levels of outside government agencies that are involved in conversations and records requests and working with the district in our efforts to resolve things as fairly as we can.
Exactly. And we've also been in contact, I know the superintendent has, with the District Attorney's Office.
Thank you, Mayor. I neglected to say that. From the incident that happened in March, we were in communication with the District Attorney's Office and have been in communication with the District Attorney's Office. And we were pleased to see the outcome that you all read about in the paper. That was what I wanted, that was what Principal Burke wanted, restorative justice, not criminal charges that were going to impact somebody's life. The other thing I want to say is, the other thing that we are very excited about is the Anti-Defamation League has a wonderful peer training program for our students. We train one teacher and students who are willing to be peer mediators in the district. It's a, it's a program that's in a number of schools. Longmeadow has this program. And we've been talking with Phil Fogelman about, and actually, I put a handout about it in, thank you, in the school committee members packets this evening. It's called Student Training Programs. It's a very worthwhile program, and we're excited. It's part of Safe Schools Protocol, so we're excited about bringing this to our district next year. We are hoping to get some students who'll be willing to train this summer. And the, the focus of the program is students working with students in mediation and in developing understandings and in developing this respect for each other, diversity, and freedom of speech. So we have not ignored this. We are trying in many, many ways to address the issues that we all find so very painful.
And I also remember too, Nancy, when we were at the meeting, Director Fogelman had said that this, this program itself is, there's a very, very long waiting list for obvious reasons, because it's such a great program that everybody would want to take, take part in, but because of us reaching out to them and them being accessible and trying to provide us with whatever facilities they can, that they would move us up to the top of the list for this. So this is something that they would present to us ahead of long lines. And I think it was also for, was it also for teachers too, or am I getting mistaken?
They train one teacher who is their, their facilitator and, and works with the students. And yes, they said that they would make sure that we had places in this program. So we greatly appreciate that. We think it's a wonderful program, and we think it's going to do some wonderful things for our schools and our students. And I'm just sorry we won't have Tess and, and some of our other students with us to participate in this because it would be our students like Tess and others who would want to do this would be excellent at this program. So we're very excited about it.
Other, other questions or comments that people would like to make?
I don't know if it's worthwhile, but also typically, the US Attorney's Office would have done the outside investigation, but because the AG's Attorney General's Office had already been, you know, contacted in this, that's where the outside investigation would stay, and the US Attorney's Office is going to provide us assistance in many other things, the forum being one, and programming later, and anything else that they could provide, so.
And the contact with the US District Attorney's Office was initiated by us to meet with them early on in this process to reflect on what our response had been to date and to gather information. So there's, there's sort of two different tracks there, separate as well from the District Attorney that, that was dealing with a specific situation. So it, I know it's a little bit hard, it's a little bit hard to keep it clear, but that...
We reached out to them. And actually, we reached out to, his name is Kevin O'Regan, the US Attorney. And from then, we've had a total, is it three meetings, Nancy, that we've had a total of? Gathering?
Two or three.
Yeah, and the third, the third meeting, which was last Monday, I believe, was where they brought in the other assistants, which was Director Fogelman and...
Muhammad.
Yes. And they're offering, you know, their assistance on, on all different ways. But I do have to tell you that the administration and the city was complimented for... But I do have to tell you that the administration and the city was complimented for going to them and reaching out to them for assistance. It's usually, what they had said is it's sometimes typically not like that. It's typically people denying that there's issues or, you know, not wanting to address them. But they were particularly impressed as to, and also though, they were informed as to the other stages we had, bringing in Sapphire and different things. But they were particularly impressed, the fact that the city administration, school, principals, superintendent, that we've reached out to them for assistance. And they're more than happy to provide it.
And the investigation, our internal investigation, we are waiting for Sapphire DeYoung to finish her work. She's collected a lot of data from the different focus meetings she's had with parents, with teachers, with students. She'll submit her report to me. I'm trying to complete my report. And then that, the investigation, our internal investigation will be made public as we said to you before. As soon as the report is given to the school committee, we'll find a time to make it public to everyone and it'll be on the website so anyone can view it. Any other questions on any of that?
I also wanted to, sorry. I also wanted to point out that last Monday, there was a conversation that went on between two members of the school committee and members of the city council and the mayor and the chief of police to be sure that all lines of communication were open.
And Nancy.
Yeah, and superintendent, my apologies, to try and as best we can. I think, I guess one of the observations I would make is, you know, I think, I have never heard anyone, particularly the students, but anyone come and speak to us where it is not apparent to me that they're invested in the well-being of the community and well-being of the schools. What we have on occasions are pretty clear differences of opinion about the nature and extent of the challenge that faces the school district and the suggestion about the best path forward. What I hope this conversation that the superintendent has just outlined, or the various components of the conversation that the mayor has spoken to, will assure people to a reasonable degree in the community that efforts are being made to try at multiple levels and in multiple ways to come to terms with what we're all struggling with and what we all hope for. I think, you know, the students have said this before, and I really applaud them, particularly in the last meeting. You know, we've heard again tonight from a graduate of the school. And they speak so eloquently about their desire to see the schools be a place where students feel that they can learn and grow. And that's not easy in this environment. And I think that we need to continue to heed all the voices and respect all the voices in the conversation, even when we're tired, we're worn out, we may be frustrated, we may think that somebody's a million miles away from us, that they're looking at something absolutely backwards to the way that they should be. You know, I had a colleague who spoke to me the other day and spoke to the students at Williston about the importance of seeing the person behind the words. Even when the words are problematic, is that if we recognize that there's a person behind the words, it can often, it can often humanize a very difficult conversation and make it possible for us to find the areas of common ground that do exist. And I think that those areas of common ground are greater than sometimes the conversation might lead us to believe because we tend to focus on the differences and the divisions. And we overlook the extraordinary things that we all share in the conversation that we have about why this school district matters. So, I want to again thank...
I just want to say one more thing. I just want to make it clear to everyone that we are not denying that we have issues that we have to face. We are not denying that at all. We have many issues we have to face. My message to you is that we are trying in every way possible to face those issues and to get us back to where we all want to be.
You know, I think that there's a way to face, there's a way to just stop it in some ways, but there's an approach of learning here and kind of a way to really courageously move forward as a community that we're all in this together. We are. And I think it's hard when our opinions are different or, you know, as Peter said, you can't find the common ground. I mean, there's certain things that absolutely will not be tolerated. But it's also an opportunity for us to do the work. And it's not going to happen overnight and it's uncomfortable. And yes, it's safety first for our students. And as a community and as adults here, it's a real opportunity that we come together because we are a part of this community. We all live here. We see each other. And we all really care. We care about this city. And yeah, I just, it's really complicated in some ways. And I think it's important that we're doing it at this moment. And I think that these issues have been brought forth and, you know, for the students, your courage in bringing that forth, because it's an opportunity for us to take a look at ourselves and to see what's not working and to really try our best to make the changes that we need to take, to make. And I mean, it's, I don't really know what else to say. It's just, it's complicated.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're absolutely right, Casey, that in, out in the world, we can sort of separate ourselves into communities that feel comfortable. But public schools bring absolutely everyone together. And that makes them an incredibly complicated living organism, but it also makes them the center of a community that actually has the potential to address conflict and disagreement in real ways. But that does take time. I know there can, I've been trying to imagine what it must feel like to watch from the outside because I do feel like, sitting up here, we get to see a little bit of the inside track of how the school is addressing the issues. And there's like a stutter in the way that it makes it to the public because there has to be a certain degree of procedure and protection of privacy and a measured approach that you have to take before, before things can be announced publicly or even shared in other ways. And so, I can understand the frustration sitting on the other side of feeling like nothing's happening. But I know that everyone on this committee is really invested in our schools, really concerned about these issues, very, very grateful to be hearing parents and community members bringing their concerns to the committee. And we're also seeing that the superintendent is working really hard on a lot of fronts. And so, I just want to acknowledge that there is that, there's that slow nature of bureaucracy and that we can't deliver an instant solution to any of these problems. But I do see good work occurring. I am hopeful. Yeah.
Thank you.
I also want to thank the other members of the school committee. I know how many hours that you have spent individually and together, you know, meeting with parents and listening to their concerns. And it's, I can't say how important it is for people to get their correct information. So, you know, again, the answers that we can give you that are within, you know, student rights, we will give you. But the frustration that you were talking about, Marissa, on our end, pretty much the administration has done nothing else but this, hours and hours and hours, and days and weeks and almost to the point of months. So, we know, we know on our end what's been doing, what's been happening here. And when there is a perception that not enough is being done or things aren't getting done, they are. They are handled. Sometimes it's information that we cannot provide because it is confidential, because it's student-related. And some breaches have been broken along the way. So, but I do know individually that there's been meetings with school, with school committee members and parents and families, and I commend you on the hours that you've spent on that. And also, Nancy has not stopped encouraging people to contact us. And that was why one of the members of the city council reached out so that they would have correct information on what is happening. And I have to say at that meeting, and I think you'll agree, Peter, that they were pretty astonished at how much has been being done. So, you know, we want to keep the communication of that open as much as we possibly can and so that everyone knows that we are taking it completely serious. And we're all working really hard together on this, but I commend the times that the committee members have spent on this.
It is a long process and we can't meet in a quorum. We can't meet outside of a school committee meeting to talk about this. So, it's a very difficult avenue to explore this. I do think we still need to tweak how different members find out information to make sure. My concern really is, I don't want to be holding a piece that somebody else needs to know. So, I think we're still, because this is a major crisis time period, we're still working out the kinks of how to make sure that everybody has the same information relatively quickly. It can't be at the same moment. It just can't. But I, that is a concern of mine. And I would like to, Nancy's really done probably as good a job as she humanly can to keep us in the loop. And I think we have to figure out a way to make that a little quicker and a little more cohesive for everybody to get the same piece, like within a day or two. And one of the things I was thinking about is Mr. Burke sent out an email to parents. That would have been nice. If we had gotten that also, then we would have been aware. My concern is if parents are aware of an issue and I'm not, then I have no way of responding to that or exploring it. So, I would ask hopefully that if there's going to be an email sent out to parents, that it's also sent out to every member of the school committee. We can receive information for information purposes only. And I think that would help to clear up some of this because we are working very hard in many hours. You are working many hours. I understand that. But I think that would help the situation.
Right. Because I think what you're trying to, you know, explain is sometime are the difficulties with the process. And as a quorum, you can't meet without a public meeting as a quorum. And on an email, you can't deliberate or it becomes the same thing as a public, you know.
But we can receive that information. So, then, you know, it's an easy fix if he is emailing everybody else. This is what happened and this is what's going on. Then at least we're aware.
And I certainly appreciate any suggestions like that, any suggestions for improving communication.
Other comments?
And I guess I would just say too, I don't know if you have thought about this too, but just as being, you know, a parent of a child in the elementary school, kind of having a clear communication, because there's, this has been in the news and so there's a lot of parents who have their concerns or questions. And I think maybe communication as a whole to all of the district, even though, you know, you can't communicate the details, but perhaps a transparent way to keep everybody in our school district in the loop.
And I have put things in my superintendent update, but I think what I'm hearing from you is maybe some intermediary communications as well.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Yeah, I think, I think we've reached the point where we really need that.
More communication.
And I'd also like to, I've said this just about every single meeting, I would really, if there's something that you feel we don't know that we should know, please, please, email one of us. And we will, in our stuttering, staggering way, make sure that everybody gets that information. We will work as quickly as we can. I don't want it to be that you assume that we know certain things have been going on when in actuality we may not.
Right, right. That's one of the things that we're finding out from the surveys, the anonymous surveys from, that Sapphire DeYoung is doing with our students, that things that we didn't know about, students know about. So, that clearly means that we have to find different channels of communication for our students and different ways of ensuring that we know all of these things that they know. And so, the teacher survey showed that, you know, they were, there was a big discrepancy between what the students were saying they experienced and what the teachers believed the students were experiencing or existed in our high schools. So, I think the surveys and the information that is being gathered through this process that the collaborative is working with us on is going to help us think about how to better, you know, better be sure that we are getting all the information we need to keep our children safe and to make our schools the respectful places we want them to be.
Now, Nancy, are we going to get a copy, the school committee going to get a copy of that report that Sapphire does?
Yes, it'll be part of that entire investigation. I'll have my part and then her report will be part of it as well.
The whole thing will be public?
Not a summary, the whole report?
Well, it's...
Yes, she's going to summarize the data.
Right.
And as with all information that comes into the public realm, it has to first be filtered to be sure that there's not any individual students or member of the school, staff member in the community being singled out in a way that violates their rights. So, there is some redacting that goes on inevitably in this merely out of an abundance of caution that a student not be able to be identified.
Peter, did you address anonymous information already too? I think you did. And the reason of how it's difficult, because if you get anonymous information and there, you want, first of all, you can't respond to it. And if there is something that, you know, is incorrect or a misperception, you know, it makes it difficult on our end to provide the correct information. But I thought you had addressed that already.
Well, as part of the early training and serving on the school committee, that one of the things that's outlined by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees is how you handle communication that comes in. The first challenge, of course, when someone sends me, and I used to get letters now, that, they're less frequent, but they still come in as unsigned statements of a concern about something. And if I have any question to clarify about where to go or what to do with it, I'm at a loss. And I certainly won't come to the meeting and say whoever it was out there who sent me the note last week, you know, the one that said this, this, and this, because that's not how we can operate. We just can't do it that way. You know, I understand that some people are going to share information with us anonymously for a variety of reasons. And it's everyone's right to send a letter. It's just our ability to do an investigation. I trust that everyone agrees that as best as we can, I mean, we are, we are, we're a fact-based culture. We inquire into facts as to what's going on, why is it going on, and trying to figure out what to do about it. But that, the pivot point in all of that is establishing with some degree of certainty what's actually happening. And we don't want to be dismissive of people who have legitimate concerns that they've only shared with us anonymously. We don't mean that that may not have happened. That may be true. But our ability to assess it is significant. to assess it is significantly reduced if we can't get clarification, if we can't get confirmation of, of who and what's involved. So I think that may be what you're referring to.
And I think we've tried to give you as many avenues to report information as possible. So you can report things to me, you can report things to school committee members, you can report things to administration or guidance counselors at the high school, you can report things to Jeff Seelander, he's been hired to do these interviews with different people in our, our high school. So, you know, find a place that you feel comfortable. And when that information is shared back to me, if you're not feeling comfortable with your name on it, you know, it will be shared back as this was firsthand information I received, I can't tell you who it is, they don't want me to tell you who it is, but here's firsthand information. That we can act on.
Thank you Nancy, I was going to ask you to, to repeat that too.
All right, well, I appreciate everyone's time and, and effort. I'll echo what the mayor said and what other people have said. Let's, let's, and I make this appeal, look to the voices that we've heard from the students from a variety of perspectives on this, and, and often if we follow their lead in, in how they share things and their willingness to talk to each other, and we are facilitating, as Nancy pointed out, and we are working with staff to facilitate more of those conversations. But if we as adults can mimic and model good conversation, I'm confident that there's not a problem in East Hampton, that East Hampton doesn't have the, the resources within the, the human community that we have here to go a long way towards addressing. We'll get outside help where we need it, but we should not underestimate the, the strength and capacity that we have as a community with our own internal resources if we take advantage of them by engaging with each other as respectfully as, as possible. So please, continue to do that, and we thank everyone for, for your efforts.
I do just have to say one last thing, and that's about students. I, I think we've gotten some of our very best ideas from our students. So, you know, we want to be sure that our students share their ideas with us. You know, I, as I say, I'll just say it again, I can't thank Tess and the students I met with, because they shared ideas with me that, that I hadn't had. And it was extremely helpful, and I think our students have some of the very best ideas. We're so proud of them, so.
And with that, we will, we will move to other matters on the agenda. And our next meeting again, just to remind folks, is on June 13th. So if some of you may not stay for some of the remainder, please feel free to join us again on the 13th and to communicate with us between now and then. Thank you for your, for your attendance, and we really do appreciate the participation of the community, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we'll move to the subcommittee reports, and first the finance subcommittee.
Finance subcommittee has amended that.
Okay, thank you. The policy review subcommittee has two second readings, correct?
Correct. Okay, so just to remind everyone what we're amending here, we are updating our family and medical leave act policy to be in alignment with the calendar dates that the city uses for its employees. So second reading for the proposed policy for the family and medical leave act. The East Hampton Public Schools shall comply with the mandatory provisions of the Family and Medical Leave Act of 1993. The superintendent shall issue and from time to time amend procedures setting forth the rights and procedures granted by the act, and shall ensure compliance either personally or by delegation or by some combination of personal oversight and delegation. The system will use a 12-month rolling period to align with the policy used by the city of East Hampton.
Second?
Second.
Third. Motion's been made and seconded for the second reading of the Family and Medical Leave Act revisions, all in favor? Thank you.
Okay. And the second, second reading relevant tonight, our school committee chain of command in the case of an absence. When the school committee chairperson is absent from a meeting or other relevant committee event, the school committee secretary shall carry out the duties of the chairperson. If both the chairperson and the secretary are absent, the most senior member of the committee shall carry out the duties of the chairperson. In the case in which there is no discernibly senior member, the committee members shall select a member to carry out the duties of the chairperson.
Second? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, yes, I seconded, sorry. All those in favor? Thank you. All right, CES update.
There is none, there is a meeting this, next week. But I will not be there, so I will have to find out what happened, because I will be in negotiations.
Okay.
Something good.
If, given what's been described already tonight, I can't imagine that anyone has the time, but if there's someone else who'd like to go in, Cindy's-
What day, what day is it?
Instead.
It is in Greenfield.
What, what day?
The 31st, I believe.
Oh, I'm going to be away that night.
Okay.
Okay, but if someone does have an interest, it's, you know, when, when you sit in, it's great to keep the lines of communication open, and it is a service for us, and things like this come up, and we appreciate your volunteering to be our liaison with CES, so thank you very much. Okay, education policy update. Marissa, thank you.
So I have been with relative frequency now talking about the foundation budget, and I will talk about that again this evening. Just to remind everyone, for those of you who haven't already heard my spiel on the foundation budget, that is the state determined formula that is used to determine how much a district must spend in order to provide its students with what the state considers an adequate education. And the formula is also used to determine how much state aid goes to each district. It was developed in 1993 and has not been updated since, so it really is out of step with the realities of expenditures. There was a recent 2015 report on, by the Foundation Budget Review Commission, it was a state issued, your state-created group, state-issued review, that came out with a lot of recommendations for how to update the formula, particularly around the cost of special education, which are vastly underestimated by the formula. I think in East Hampton, the foundation budget estimated that we would spend around $800,000 on special education in 2016, and in reality it was 1.3 million approximately. The other area which has significant underestimation is in district employee health insurance. The formula uses a really strange calculation, it's like somehow related to inflation rate, and some years the, it, it estimates that the cost of health insurance will increase by like 0.1% or something. Sometimes it's even estimate, there'll be years where estimates the cost of insurance will decrease. Of course, we've never seen that happen, it's been exponentially increasing. So given the districts still need to cover those costs, it means the budget gets squeezed in other areas, including instruction. So the formula would address, the updated formula implementing the review commission's recommendations would address some of those, those gaps and those inconsistencies. So a few committees across the state have been passing resolutions to encourage legislators to make this a legislative priority. It's something that is sort of anonymously, anomalously unanimous, I don't know why I try to string those two words in.
You're saying a lot of words at once.
A lot of people on Beacon Hill have agreement on this issue when they normally don't agree on things. But nonetheless, there has been no action to implement these, implement these recommendations, because it's, it means asking the state to give districts more money. And politicians need a little bit of urging before they're going to be willing to do that for us. So I am proposing that the school committee put together a working group, I would be happy to spearhead it, to draft a brief resolution that would encourage our legislators to implement these recommendations. I know that MASC is keeping a running log on their website of school committees that have passed a, a resolution on this issue, and so I would be happy to join forces with those committees like we did on the ballot two question. Also to consider if we could ask our city council if they would be interested in also passing a resolution. We had a, as, you know, we had a forum last month, and Sarah is here, she helped organize, and a number of city councilors came to, to that event, because I think it does have particular relevance to city councils, because when the state isn't providing the amount of state aid that it should be providing, we have to go to our local taxpayers and ask them to make up the difference. And so we know that a significant portion of our city budget goes to public education. I can't imagine a better thing to do with the city budget, but if we could get the state to send more money this way, I'm sure our city councilors could figure out other places to spend some reserved local dollars as well. So, yeah, so I'd love to put something together for us, and then also something to, to invite the city council to join.
I think that's a great idea.
So who would, who would be interested in joining Marissa on this working committee to, to help draft something that could then come back to the committee as a whole?
I'll join Marissa on that.
Thank you, Sarah.
This time I'll remember eligible.
I would normally say that I would love to join it, but I think you have to get this done pretty quickly, and right now we are really doing negotiations, and it's-
That's more than-
It's eating up-
I would love to get it put together so we can pass it.
There must be samples, correct?
Yeah.
All right, well, Sarah, for now, if you and Marissa will communicate via email when you're getting together to, to work on it, and then if we can have a third person join you, the three of you, am I, I'm, well, I'm hoping I'm right, three people can work on the proposal without posting it as a public meeting? We probably should post it as a public meeting anyway, just to be safe. But- Yes.
The working group?
It's more, yeah.
Working group or subcommittee? Right.
We didn't post it when it was just me and Marissa on the last one.
Right, well, I think when it's two, I think as, I think as soon as you have a third person, my belief-
Not posting it publicly means that we can have it in our homes after our kids are asleep, which makes it a much easier for us to get it done faster.
Correct, so.
As long as it's not, as long as it's not a quorum of the same subcommittee.
Okay.
Unless people want to come to my house, I'm totally fine with that.
I think for now, and for, for the speed with which we want to get this done, you know, if you have Sarah and Marissa.
Terrific.
Right, because Deb, you and I are on the-
We'll go that way.
Bargaining team.
Okay.
And I've been generating a lot of written stuff about this recently, so it should be pretty great.
I think we'll be able to get it done pretty quickly.
But are you on the same subcommittee?
We are.
But just two of us-
Which is why I can't go, because then I would be, and then it would be, it'd affect the subcommittee on policy, we'd be meeting.
But isn't there, how many are in your subcommittees, three?
Three, yeah.
So two out of three is a quorum.
Yeah.
So it becomes a-
Ah, correct.
I thought there were four, isn't Nancy Prater's?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor, you're right, because they're both on the policy subcommittee, as am I, so there's no two out of the three of us. Well, you know, what we might end up doing in this case is asking you to draft something that you bring to the next meeting, in the same way that Casey helped by doing some of the initial work on the immigration policy that's coming up next to address.
No, but they're not going to have a meeting, so.
Right, so I think, I think we're going to revise what we said before-
Yeah.
And not have that meeting.
Okay.
And have instead task Marissa with that excellent idea that you can now follow through on. I wanted to just add, did you have more to the education policy?
No, I would love to hear about the Medicaid stuff.
I'm sorry that so many people left, because I am, I am so confident that we can do the good work necessary to resolve the, the, the concerns that have been manifest in the high school over the last stretch of time, that, that this other challenge of financing will, will persist well beyond it, and, and should matter as much to everyone who is here in the room. We've heard this talked about again and again and again, that when we talk about education policy in the Commonwealth, we say, well, if you look at the money part of it, and people say, well, let's set the money side aside and just look at the policy, and I use my overused terrible joke, that's sort of like saying to Mrs. Lincoln, other than that, what did you think of the play? Right, the money really matters. And the budget that's been proposed this week will reduce Medicaid. And what people don't understand, that while they're looking at Medicaid over here and think that schools are safe over here, they're not, because Medicaid is a source of reimbursement to the school districts for important services provided to students with special needs. So for example, if a student needs occupational therapy or physical therapy as part of their IEP, and it costs the district $10,000, we can submit that $10,000 expenditure to Medicaid and get some reimbursement back. Say we get $7,000 of the 10 back, means we're still going to have to pay $3,000 for that child, but under the proposed changes that would come forward, that number might drop to getting $2,000 in reimbursement. Now, the $5,000 gap won't come by not providing those services, we're mandated by law to provide those services to a student under an IEP. So what it means is that that $5,000 will now come out of the general education budget, and will be a reduction in some policy. Let's just use, for example, tonight, that if we had $5,000, wouldn't it be great to devote it to supporting Mr. Benoit's program?
Right.
But, but that's not what we're talking about, we're not talking about having extra five, we're talking about taking $5,000 away from something. So it's really hard to follow the bouncing ball through this, but it's really important. If the Medicaid budget that's been proposed, if the reductions of the Medicaid budget that's been proposed go through, it will reduce the general funds available for expenditure on public education in the Commonwealth. Bottom line, you can go from point A to point D, and you have to, and you have to get there. And what I would ask everyone who's left in the room is call your legislator, call your member of Congress, call the senators, and say, what's your understanding? Because don't take my word for it, corroborate this, I could be wrong, but as I've studied it, this is my understanding. And if this is true, share with them your opinion about whether that's a good idea. You might think that that's a good idea. I, I would disagree with you respectfully, I think you're more inclined to say, is this really good to have tax cuts to stimulate the economy at the expense of the education of the future workforce in that economy? To me, it doesn't make sense as a matter of policy, and so I would encourage you to do that. I also want to add one piece, because Secretary DeVos, and I only read a portion of this, but she recently spoke at length about the importance of increasing choice and choice-related programs in public education, and that it's, I, I think that it is crucial that we understand not just the economic impact of charter choice, and if Secretary DeVos has her way, the introduction of vouchers, which raise a host of, of constitutional issues. But I want to come back to the very basic thing that we were talking about before, about everybody in the room, you said this more eloquently than I can, Marissa, that public schools are the place that bring everybody in the community together. The more we encourage charter, choice, and voucher, the more we disintegrate that important part of the fabric. If students and families disagree on political issues, I frankly think that that's great, and that they can talk about that, and they can learn how to explore it in a common public school. If instead, we facilitate the migration of people into schools that are echo chambers for their political, religious, or other desires, it goes from being a common school to being a faction school. And James Madison said 225 years ago, that the greatest threat to this republic is factions, where people start to put their own self-interest ahead of the good of the whole. And I, I just want to tie the conversation about the budget and the policies that are, that are put forward at the federal government right now, that they both threaten what we are trying to accomplish. They put us under additional stress, money that goes away that we can't use to bring in peer-to-peer instruction to address this issue because of this budget change, so.
And it's also threatens the budget that this, this state can actually give to public schools.
Correct.
Because they're going to have to make up for that difference on a state level, so it's also-
It'll either at the state or at the local level, we will face this, this shifting of responsibility.
Right.
And the, the shifting of the responsibility is, to me, mistaken, because they haven't thought it all the way through to what the consequences are in a community that's already got a proposition two and a half, right? We can't, right? I mean, it's really, if you're, if you're anti-tax, right? If you're, if you're Grover Norquist and you don't want to eliminate government, you want to make it small enough so that you can drown it in a bathtub, you know, this is a great way to do it, it's a very devious way. You know that school communities and states are capped as to how much money they can raise, absent doing a special referendum. Well then, you eliminate federal funding, which forces, right, the overall expenditure on education in the Commonwealth and in the country will go down, with out evidence that it will appreciably improve educational outcomes or satisfy our constitutional requirement to provide equal education for all of the kids, so.
I think another, another aspect of the Medicaid that a lot of people don't understand and the impact that it'll have on the school, is that it's not just services that are provided within the school that are at risk, there's other state programs that are provided through Medicaid for children with disabilities that make up some of the gaps. So like, we're, as a school district, we're responsible to- So like, we're, as a school district, we're responsible to educate students with disabilities because they are students in, they're children in our community, and they have a right to an education. But there are other programs that can also help them. So like, there's the Children's Autism Medicaid waiver, that I think 200, 300, maybe, maybe more now, of students throughout the state participate in. And that, that basically allocates families a grant of a certain amount of money that they can use for outside-of-school services, so behavioral therapy, speech therapy, occupational therapy, things that aren't covered by insurance, respite, you know, access to emergency funding for things that they need, stuff like that. If those, if that program were to be cut or, or goes away, and there's a huge, I mean, it's a lottery program, there's a huge pool of people who are trying to get into it, if we were to lose that program, I think we would have a lot of students that we would need to, that would need more support, that, so there'd be even more pressure on the school to offer those students more support. And there are students in our district who are on the Children's Autism Medicaid waiver, which is really, really great, because it's a great program that I wish everybody could be on. Because it does kind of take, and, because it's great for the students, and then it also does take some of the impact off of the school in terms of supporting these students as much as they need. So, you know, if we're looking at, and then also Medicaid also assists adults with disabilities in terms of getting them housing, access to employment training, access to day programming, that's all, well, it's not all funded through Medicaid, but a lot of that is Medicaid reimbursed in the same way. So if we have cuts to our Medicaid reimbursements, we're going to have cuts to those programs as well. So it goes even beyond like what happens in our school district in terms of like impacting our students throughout their lifespan and into adulthood and beyond, and then also the impact that that has on what we need to fund as a community. It's just a huge disaster thinking about the way that we're going into it, with, like what Peter said, very little forethought and very little understanding of what Medicaid actually is and what it actually does. But, yeah.
And I'd like to reiterate the importance, I mean, you touched on it, Peter, the importance of people staying if they're here for the whole meeting, especially for this portion, and hopefully people watching at home. We, as a school committee, are pretty active when it comes to writing letters, letting our voices be heard across the state. And we added this section to the constant agenda of a school committee meeting so that we could let people know what issues are coming up, and hopefully get some support around things like the foundation budget and all of the, we're in a period where things are constantly changing for schools, and it, we feel it's really important that everybody understands the particular issues that are arising almost on a weekly basis.
Yeah.
Yes. Well, I appreciate all of this conversation, and I hope that we can, you know, part of our responsibility is to, is to educate the community about the concerns that become apparent to us. So thank you, Marissa, for spearheading this and taking on this additional responsibility here on the foundation budget. And Casey, that brings us to the proposal that you have had before us, and that we now have for review on immigration.
I'm actually going to, that's on our agenda for the subcommittee meeting immediately following this.
Right, thank you for that.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I appreciate that.
No, thanks.
So, policy subcommittee meeting immediately following this, we'll have that. Are there any other matters for discussion at this stage? Okay. Then we have a number of matters for action.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. This is, good to be deliberate.
Okay. Payroll?
Payroll, sure, let's do that first.
I move to approve the school payroll dated May 25, 2017, in the amount of $491,062.00.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the school payroll dated 25 May 2017, in the amount of $491,062.00. All in favor? Thank you.
And...
Is there a second on that?
Oh, yes, I have. I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated May 25, 2017, in the amount of $321,123.45.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for the payment dated 25 May 2017, in the amount of $321,123.45. All in favor?
Right.
All right.
Okay, and I believe it's just a duplicate.
Yes, so it's a duplicate, it's a signature, so the next would be the minutes from the May 9 meeting?
So just, motion to approve the minutes of the May 9, 2017 school committee meeting.
Second.
Yes, second. Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the May 9, 2017 meeting of the East Hampton School District. All in favor? Thank you. We have two out-of-state field trip requests. One, the first one is from Nancy Dunn, and it involves training for students under the organization SAD. It's located in Florida, you can see the details in the packet. Entertaining motion on that.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Motion made and seconded, all those in favor approving the out-of-state field trip request for East Hampton High School to Florida, and the students against destructive decisions. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And we have a second, this involves the Whitebrook Middle School, shoot, Mystic Aquarium. I kept having, science museum and Mystic Aquarium. And this is, this has been approved by the principal, Principal Belice, and the teacher, Ms. Cazera.
Motion to approve.
And?
Second.
Second, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Right.
Aye, terrific. We also have a request for a one-year unpaid leave of absence. Superintendent Falls, perhaps you could tell us a little bit more about that before we vote?
Yes, this request comes from Sophia Cheka, a mathematics teacher at the high school, and she's requesting a leave of absence without pay. Her husband has received a Fulbright scholarship to do research in Europe for the next academic year, and she would like to be able to accompany him and her family. And I recommend approving this.
That was a lot happier than I thought it was going to be.
Yeah, no, it's great, it's great.
So, I'll, I'll move that we approve the request for one year of unpaid leave for Ms. Cheka.
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
It's a great idea.
Yep, okay. That's terrific, so that means that that, and that. Now, the, the full meeting will adjourn, and then the subcommittee for policy will continue, and we are going to meet in there. So, a motion to adjourn the full meeting?
Full meeting.
School committee meeting.
Sorry.
Full school committee meeting.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?